Please call the roll.
Kuz.
Here.
Ferris.
Fred.
Carlson.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Stevenson.
Here.
West.
Here.
Zingy.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now bring this down to persons to be heard. And Kathleen, you get to start us off. Is Kathleen here?
She was, I thought I saw her.
Oh, well, wait till she gets back. Linda, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Linda Kunzaga. I reside at 841 Forest Avenue, and tonight I represent the Alaska Small Business Development Center. And my voice is getting ready to go, so I apologize in advance. I wanted to thank the council and the mayor for your support of the Alaska Small Business Development Center. We have just got the community agency funding agreement fully signed, and I believe that the invoice has been sent. So I wanted to thank you for that. Also, you have received our third quarter report, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have on that. But I want to also say, in retrospect, I should have been up here giving you courtesy copies all along. And hindsight is 20/20. I didn't think of it. If I had of, I would have done it. So that will never happen again to any funder as long as I'm representing the center. So I wanted to look you in the eyes and say, I apologize. I wanted to tell you some happenings that are going on at the center today at noon. We were open during the lunchtime, and we have done that in the past. We plan on being open during the lunch hour on Thursdays for a networking forum for business owners and budding entrepreneurs. And it will also have an educational component to it, too. So we're looking forward to that from September to March. Today, we premiered a video, which is "Growing Our Economy Through Small Business." And you can also preview it yourself if you go to our website. It's on the main page, and the website address is AKSBBC.org, and it says, "Watch Video." And it actually is showcasing some of our success stories. You also received our new resource guide, and we do have the Ketchikan success story in there. The organization has been working really hard to actively showcase our success stories. So in the coming months, you will see more Ketchikan businesses on our website under Success Stories. And when we have new flyers, I'll make sure that I get those to you, too. Upcoming, we have Barbara Hanson with the Division of Agriculture will be presenting the On-Farm Food Safety Workshop. That's hosted by Ketchikan Businesses Bureau, and it will take place at the center. This is a great opportunity for people who are doing the farmer's market and potentially some of the commercial farmers that we have working on their facilities to be educated on that food handling. We also have, on August 25th and 26th, our Profit Mastery Workshops. That's an intensive 16-hour course, which goes extensively into your financial statements with hands-on learning opportunities. It's a $200 course due to job skill. We have it reduced to $195, so that funding is running out. So for $200, it's a good educational opportunity. So again, I wanted to thank you all and answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Linda? Thank you, Linda.
Thank you very much.
Kathleen, you ready?
Hello, my name is Kathleen Light. I'm the Executive Director of the Arts Council. I live at 410 Cedar. Sorry, I missed the bell there and wasn't here when you called me the first time. I wanted to thank the city for all of your assistance in getting the Blueberry Arts Festival happening this year. We had a lot of struggles, and the city came through, the Street Department, the Public Works, the KPU Electrical. All of those guys came through and helped us out. It was really great. We believe this was our biggest blueberry ever. We don't have all the numbers yet. I'll give them to you next time so that you have all of those. We did a lot of new programming. We did a musical instrument petting zoo that was really well-attended for young people to figure out if they wanted to play a musical instrument in school. What happened that we didn't expect was a lot of adults came and tried instruments. So that's kind of fun. We did the community art project again this year for the second time. We did a project à la Jackson Pollock, so people could splatter and spray and smear paint on the ground. And that was a big hit as well. So those are a couple of our new events. We added children to our poetry reading. And don't tell the adults, but the children readers were outstanding. They read some really, really moving poems, and they wowed the crowd. So we were really impressed with that. On Monday, we started the Basic Arts Institute. I've been talking about that for quite a while. The Arts Council applied to the Alaska Arts Education Consortium back in the fall to have a Basic Arts Institute in Ketchikan. And this is a two-week intensive seminar for our educators, for our teachers, to continue their professional development, learning ways to integrate the arts into their curriculum. So it started on Monday. It's been going crazy. It's an eight-to-five, really intensive course for them. There's 26 teachers. There's a teacher from Huna and a teacher from Hollis. So we had a couple folks come in from outside to take the course. It's a two-week course. They're going to do their final presentation a week from tonight out at the Saxon Tribal House. They wanted me to specifically invite each and every one of you to attend. They'll be presenting their dance, their music, and their artwork at this performance at 6:30 at the Saxon Tribal House. What these educators will have at the end of the Basic Arts Institute is a portfolio of new lesson plans, developing their curriculum using the arts. And they're all very excited. So we're really proud of that. In addition, next week, the Alaska State Council on the Arts Executive Director and Education Director are coming to Ketchikan. And they've never been. So this is their first visit here, the new one. The old pair had come before, but this new pair have been in their positions for two or three years, and they haven't been to Ketchikan yet. So we're going to spend Tuesday and Wednesday of next week taking them to every artist we can get them to. They will be talking to the Basic Arts Institute. We will be, in addition, we are going to have a candidate forum for the creative community of Ketchikan. And this is our opportunity as the creative industry to talk to the candidates, the forecandidates, about issues that relate to artists and people that are interested in the creative economy. So that's going to happen on the 12th. All of you are very, very, very invited to attend after that candidate forum, which is at the Fish House at 6:30 on Tuesday. After that forum, we're going to have a reception. So it's a great chance to talk to the candidates and to talk to artists. And like I said, you guys are very, very invited to attend. And that's all I have for now.
Any questions for Kathleen?
Thank you.
Kathleen, thank you very much. Pat Chapman.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Williams and council members. My name is Pat Chapman. I reside at 3233 Emma Court. About 2007, I think it was, Jesse and I came up here in front of the same council. And some of you were on the board at that time. We're talking about disability parking and access on the streets. Well, you guys did a wonderful job. You put in many parking spots, so I can now take my car and Jesse and find parking around Ketchikan. However, in this area up here, where the First City Players is going to be having, there is no parking. When I park and I go down there, and one day I did this, and I took Jesse down in her manual chair, we almost made it down to Dock Street. I luckily took and pushed her chair into the wall and managed to back it down so I could get her into the First City Players building down there. I encourage you to take this parking up here, right off to this corner over here, and make it all handicap parking. When we came here in 2007, I think there was three handicap vehicles at the time. People in wheelchairs or scooters using access. There are many, many handicap ramp vehicles now in Ketchikan. But the parking, handicap parking, isn't only used for wheelchair. It's used for people in walkers or people who have other disabilities walking. You look around at the cars anymore, any of the parking areas that you have, and you'll see lots and lots of handicap stickers. So we need more than just one or two spots up there at the City, First City Players. So I encourage you to look at that and just make that spot up there for handicap. And I thank you. Have you got any questions?
Any questions for Pat? Thank you, Pat.
Okay.
Next, Keith Smith.
Good evening. I wanted to thank the council for revisiting this issue of our proposal for the Performing Arts Center. I wanted to take the opportunity to make a couple of clarifications and maybe some suggestions based on the original proposal. Now, what we're seeking, again, is quality ADA access through the McCaw Lot that would be integrated with our main entrance on Main Street. The motion would allow city staff to negotiate a solution that would be then later voted on by the council at a later date. We believe and are convinced in talking to architects that we can accomplish quality access with the elimination of no more than one parking space in the McCaw Lot. And we invite the council to include that parameter in any motion you might make tonight. I think that just, that clarifies it. It makes it, if, given that parking is obviously a concern to many people downtown, it allows the minimal loss of parking. And I think that we would be able to create a strong access and parking for access within that parameter. Now, one other correction. Some council members were under the impression during the last meeting that the unpaid lot adjacent to the Fireside and the Pioneer Hall was owned by the Fireside, owned by the Performing Arts Center, and therefore, why didn't we have it coming through there? And I just wanted to clarify that that is in fact not the case. That entire lot and access is owned by the Pioneer Hall, the Pioneers of Alaska. Now, I think that in all this, there's some room to be creative in meeting everyone's concerns. The only public opposition to our proposal that I'm aware of has been from our friends at Coastal Real Estate. And they made it clear in the last meeting that their opposition to the proposal was not because of staff parking, that it was out of a concern very specifically for their clients that came coming in in peak summer season in order to have short meetings at Coastal Real Estate. And that they wanted, and that they wanted to protect that convenience for their clients to be able to park in that lot. And I just wanted to suggest that we could, in fact, eliminate one space and take one to two to three other spaces, depending, only one would accomplish it, and designate it as one half-hour parking. And that if we did that, the overall parking capacity for those shorter meetings would, in fact, be increased. You would be able to have four people meeting for a half-hour at a time in one parking spot, rather than perhaps that one parking spot taken up for two hours. So that there is a way to be able to serve other users, other parkers in the area by shortening the period within that space. And that that might be an ultimate solution, not one that you would vote on now, but it could be part of what was negotiated, should you choose to empower us to negotiate with city staff to come up with a solution that would allow for access, integrated quality access to the Performing Arts Center. You know, the only other thing I wanted to say is that Ketchikan really is a wonderful place for so many of us to live. And yet, a lot of things that are wonderful to me about Ketchikan and living here are not equally accessible to everyone. And they can't be. Beachcombing, for instance, cannot always be equally accessible to everyone. But the one thing that can be equally accessible to everyone in this town is the performing arts and the Performing Arts Center. And your action tonight could really make that a possibility for decades to come by allowing for quality, integrated access to the Performing Arts Center through the McCaw Lot. And we ask that you vote to make that a possibility. Thank you.
Any questions for Keith? Marty?
I just have one question. I'm for this, and we'll vote for this. But when you talk about losing one spot, are you talking about the actual loss of a parking place? Or are you talking about the change of an existing parking place to become a handicap parking space?
Well, it could perhaps be the latter. The one thing that we want to make sure and do is provide that can extend into the building a pathway for a level pathway into the building through the parking lot. You know, and a pathway for a chair, I believe, is three feet. It would be possible to make one of those spaces. You would lose ultimately a space because a handicap parking space is larger. But theoretically, if you extended one of those spaces to a handicap parking space, the additional three feet that you would have to add to that space, and that would mean the elimination of one of those spaces there, could also be the integrated access that we're looking for. So you might be able to kill two birds with one stone that way. But what we have focused on particularly here is the access into the building that would create, that would dovetail into the entrance into Main Street by taking out part of that wall.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Keith.
Judy? And Bob?
So is this a new design? I just remember there was a design before. Is this, does this replace the other design? Because I thought the ADA access was, I mean, maybe I'm misunderstanding.
The existing conceptual design for the Performing Arts vision was a conceptual design made as part of a feasibility study that was designed to show whether it were feasible to have to code a Performing Arts Center in that space. And we had that completed, paid for that before we purchased the building from First Bank. So that has been the existing design that we've been happy to say expresses the vision of the Performing Arts Center. We are now moving into the next design phase for the building, which is going to get a lot more specific. Within the feasibility study, it was identified that it would be desirable, should we be able to achieve access through the McCaw Lot in order to have access into the building, integrated with the Main Street access, and allowing for a better and higher-quality ADA access. And so before we enter into that design phase, that is what we are seeking today from the council, is a blessing on trying to work towards a design that would be both successful for the building, make for a stronger choice for the building, a more successful building, and one that better serves our citizens without, hopefully, taking up too much from other valuable users of the area. Obviously, parking is a premium. So that's our aim here tonight, is, yes, there was a design, but that was a conceptual design for a feasibility study. And now we're trying to move towards something more specific and, in fact, better.
So I thought last week it was three spaces. So now you're saying you only need one space, period? Or you just want one space to be ADA, but you still need?
To clarify, what we did in initial is, is we knew that we would need this access. And my proposal was, did not specify how many spaces. And that the manager's office met with us and Chief Dossit and Cliff Allen to go over different aspects of this and asked us to try and narrow down, for your benefit, what we were looking for, and in fact, looking for some parameter. At that time, I was, I remember saying, caught a little bit flat-footed. I really don't think we'll need more than two spaces. So I was just trying to give a parameter without there being a specific design, because there's no drawing for it. The drawing will come after a negotiation of something that we can all agree that the city could lose or that that area could lose in parking. So we had that meeting, and then in the write-up, I think, what ended up being writing is sort of, just as a general parameter, no more than three spaces. What we've taken from the last meeting is to try and narrow that down, obviously, to accommodate our friends in the neighborhood and trying to be good neighbors, and also to have something that could be a successful choice for everybody. So that's why in talking, getting some advice from designers, I think that we've all agreed we can get this done with one space.
Okay, thank you.
Bob?
So you already went through an initial renovation of the building. Is that correct?
What, the small-scale renovation that has occurred in that building was to be able to move First City Players' office in the first floor with something that was large enough to have an accessible rehearsal space. The overall renovation of the Performing Arts Center is in the future. And obviously, anything that we come up with tonight and in negotiation would be contingent, obviously, in the completion of that design.
Yeah, well, my concern is why it wasn't made a priority in your initial renovation as to not handicap yourself at future access, integrated access in your own footprint.
Well, partially, in that the one space that could be most inexpensively done for that office space already was accessible for that office space. And so it made for a simpler project for that, you know, that 1,000 square feet of a 21,000-square-foot facility. So what we're looking for now is, when you'll have performances, something that is integrated to where the performances are going to be, which is in a different part of the building.
Well, okay, I understand that. But, you know, I think that if, understanding how Performing Arts Centers work and the need for integrated access, that that would have been a priority in how you located your office. And if you hamstrung yourself by putting your office up front so you no longer have that ability without a larger renovation, I don't get that, I guess.
Yeah, I, there's, you know, history is part of it and how a project ends up moving forward.
I just think that.
That may have been a better way to go. But it certainly, with having an integrated access when we made that first renovation, would mean taking out part of a wall of the building, and which is a much bigger-sized product, project than that initial renovation actually was. So if, you know, to come up with, probably why it didn't happen, I would say it probably had exactly to do with that.
KJ? Oh, do you have an hour, Bob?
Yeah, I just think that, I don't want to call foreplanning, but the inability for private or non-torments to properly plan doesn't make the responsibility that of the public to fix that issue. You know, you have a 21,000-foot building that you have the availability to make access through. And, but instead of doing that, you did something else. And now you're asking the city, public property, to fix an issue that maybe you could have addressed early on.
I believe in looking at the building, that had we, in our original small-scale renovation, asked and created an integrated access, it would have meant coming to the city council and asking for the exact same thing that we are asking for today.
Can you, KJ?
The Pioneers of Alaska, the dirt parking lot back there. Have you discussed leasing and/or renting that? I mean, would that be an area where you could make a handicap parking in there, into the back area of your building?
We have, we have had conversations with them. Certainly, we have addressed in the very beginning what they would want for a permanent solution. Because First Bank, you know, that created that loading access in that building, had a lease accessing through that. And so looking, but that was a temporary thing. Looking for a permanent solution for that through the Pioneer, we have not been successful.
I'm still of the impression there is still a possibility of working something out with, what is it, the Pioneer Igloo? Yeah. Of leasing that and punching a hole through your back wall, whatever you need to do to make handicap access. Because I understand the need for the access. Just have a little problem with the need for the access coming out of city funds is just where I'm riding at. So I was thinking maybe there was a chance still to negotiate with the Pioneers or wherever they are.
Anybody else have a question? Dick?
Yeah, Keith, I, I'm with KJ a little bit there, because I know that you did have a lease with those guys over there at Pioneers, and something went wrong. And I'm not going to say where it went wrong or whatever, but that's the most logical place. But the other question is, you need access into the building. And you're going to want a handicap sitting beside that quote runway. That means somebody's got to manage that handicap place, plus we lose something. And you're going to be using it at night anyway, when, that's when most are using it. And you've got, if you've got more than one person trying to use that spot, who's going to manage that spot? I mean, it's only going to create for one parking for one person that needs it. And the same thing goes if it's over in the police station, that's 75 feet away from that building. And if you did knock a hole in that wall and put a wall and put it, use one of the parking lots to drive into it, you could probably manage it yourself and keep it open, because there's no people in there using it at night. But it leaves it available for the public during the day without being tagged handicap. Park over there, unload, it's undercover, and push people into it. So I'm leaving, I'm throwing options out to you, because I've got some concerns about the whole thing.
Our first priority, because it affects design so much, where you end up putting this access, is to provide the way that you can get a wheelchair in the building in a level place. There are a lot of things that are, I believe, always in a state of flux and should be to best accommodate all the different parkers and their requirements for the entire area that I think might ultimately be addressed separately. Because sometimes you start addressing too many things within one package.
too many things within one package, and it becomes very unwieldy. So, so in terms of the question of how spaces are managed to make sure that they are accessible to people that use them, I would have to defer to someone else in, in, in how that is usually done.
Deanne?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think all you're asking at this point in time is just the ability to negotiate and look at alternatives. I mean, we're not putting anything in stone tonight, we're just opening up the ability for, for the Park Center and the city and Coastal and other neighbors to open the dialogue, and there may not be a solution. I mean, at the end of the negotiation, it may just be like, well, you know, we tried, we can't do anything. But if I'm correct, all you're asking is just to have that conversation and see where it could go.
That is my understanding of, of the motion, and Manager Amalon may be able to be more specific about what the parameters, but...
I mean, we're not defining tonight where that's going to be, or how it's going to be, it's just opening dialogue.
But I'm suggesting, and that's, but we, we are suggesting that it never hurts if there is a will of the council to add in a parameter that gives direction towards ultimately negotiating a solution that everyone could be happy with.
And, you know, I certainly can understand the frustration, because I understand there's some parking available across the street, but I have had family members in town who have needed a wheelchair. I couldn't imagine pushing them across the street in the rain and the snow, I couldn't even imagine pushing them from this covered spot out here by the back door to get them to a doorway someplace. I mean, they would probably drown by the time I got them there, they would be soaking wet, or they're going to be tipped out of their chair and fall. You know, I've had a variety of sports injuries in my life where I couldn't walk very well. It would have been frightening to have to negotiate some of the places here locally, not just this area, but other places as well, to get access to them when you aren't fully functionable. And I think, you know, we have a whole population of people here that we need to consider and take into consideration that, you know, to help in some manner. You know, I don't think we're asking that we reinvent the wheel, or, you know, impose on other people, but just simply to see what we, what can be available to work something out.
Thanks, Deanne. Anybody else? Thanks, Keith.
Thank you.
We're back to Valantop.
Good evening, Mayor Williams and City Council members. I'm here tonight in support of quality, independent access of the Performing Arts Center. I have, I would like to touch on three different things that I think that is so important. Number one, the youth that are here growing up. I now have both of my children living here, and I'm the proud grandmother of little twins, Emma and Miles, five months old, that will be growing up here in Ketchikan. And one thing about the quality integrated access that would be for our youth is that by having a centralized entrance, it will make it easier to monitor the building when there's youth activities going on. And anything that makes it safer for the youth, and any of you that have raised children will probably understand that it's very important to keep things as safe as possible. Number two, I grew up climbing 14,000-foot peaks in Colorado, I skied all my life, and I've done a heck of a lot of hiking. I never thought I would have a hard time getting through a day, but thanks to a drunk driver, it changed my life. And just all of you sitting here tonight, you might be surprised that the odds are that probably one or two of you might be, and I, believe me, I, I hope you all live your lives and never have to be disabled, but it's, it's possible that life sometimes throws things that we're, we don't expect. Others are born with, with disabilities, and, and not only that, we're also talking about the senior citizens here. There are a lot of senior citizens that are not technically disabled, but I'm telling you, they have a hard time getting around. I've talked to a lot of them. So, this is another thing that we really have to be concerned about. Number three, I am a, a property owner here in, in Ketchikan, and there are people who have retired here, they've taken their money and they've gone on to their, wherever they want. But there is a group of us here in this town who find this town very magical. It's, I grew up in Santa Fe, New Mexico, so Santa Fe is also another magical town with the big arts center. And this place is so much like that, only more remote and beautiful, and a real melting pot of cultures. But those of us that stay here, we're putting money into the city because we care about this community. And one of the things that holds many of us here is this wonderful, wonderful arts community that is in, is in this town. So I am, I'm hoping that you will really understand that there is a great need for what Keith is asking for, and it's, what he's asking for is, is something that's going to benefit all of us in this wonderful town, and I thank you.
Thank you very much. Maureen Roth, please.
My name is Maureen Roth, I live at 2306 Second Avenue, and I vote in the city of Ketchikan. I request the city council to approve the easement through the McCaw parking lot for ADA access integrated with the main entrance to the Performing Arts Center building. I propose oppose and the choice of the alternative access, which goes down the steep sidewalk through the current First City Player Office, back through the basement, and up to the elevator. In determining the quality and convenience of an access, some factors to consider are time, challenges, an expedient emergency exit, long-term convenience, and one parking space. The pro to the alternative access route is leaving one parking space as is downtown. The cons to the alternative access route are an increase in the length of time it takes to navigate the longer alternative route. The challenges to mobility upon this route are a steep sidewalk, taking twists and turns through office rooms, hallways, and an elevator. While precarious mobility is often a factor among the disabled, a large portion of Ketchikan's retirement age population, which has been and will probably continue to increase, here I am, are also often precariously mobile. Last, but most importantly, this route is an emergency accident, is by far inferior to the exit available to the general public, to the wrong crew of people, too. And as an additional note, the Performing Arts Center financially benefits from the support of Ketchikan's retirement population. It is to the Performing Arts Centers and the city's benefit to ensure continued and perhaps increased financial and artistic support from this increasing population by providing an appreciated and needed ADA access integrated with the main entrance, all for a minimum cost of one parking lot. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much. General gauge, it looks like.
Good evening.
You're welcome.
Mayor Williams, and guys, I sent this to you guys through an email, I'm just gonna go through just some points. I am concerned that the Ketchikan supports the quality integrated access to the Performing Arts Center. I'm an active member of the First City Players, which has been an integral part of my life, even while I was out of town working. I can tell you that this town is one of the most amazing places in Alaska when it comes to arts. I lived in Cotsview, nothing. I lived in Kenai, not even, and not very fun or inviting. After my accident, I came to understand frustrations of many of our fellow community members who have mobility issues, and how important it is to people with disabilities to have the same amount of independence available to them regardless of their physical disability. As an able-bodied person, we do not understand or realize the importance of integrated access, and that it isn't just about being able to access a building or a program, of being able to go in in a fluid manner. Being able to just jump up, say, I'm going to go to the show, without having to make special arrangements, or call ahead and make sure that the door can be open. They can just stroll in, wheel in, hop into that building with all the other people at the same vantage point. Once you separate the entrance for a disabled person from an able-bodied person, you are segregated. It is not, it does not feel good. And until you're in that position, you don't, it's hard to understand, it's hard to see that as, as that way. Yes, many of you look at me and you say, she can walk, she can climb that hill, but you don't see is that climbing that hill wears on my good knee. It is painful on my joints, and it takes another year off the life of my leg, hips, and my good knee. I do not know how many years I have left in my leg, hips, and, and all of it. Actually, I had a surgery last April to be able to walk on it again. So mobility issues are going to be a problem. Level, quality, integrated access is not only good for wheelchairs, but for those of us with other not-so-visible mobility issues. It also tells us we are an important part of this community, and we want you to feel welcome and equal. The decision of the city council will have lasting repercussions regardless of how it votes, but it will be much easier to improve parking at a later date, should it ever be necessary, than it would be to renovate the Performing Arts Center again after the initial one. Also, we need to be aware of the message we are sending to our elders, families, and friends who are aging up and plan to retire here, as well as our physically disabled community. Do we really want to send a message to our disabled community, elders, and visitors that basement access is the value we place on them as an equal member of our community? So that was my, part of my email, I kind of broke it up. Right now, in the United States, there's a real push for social integration, and this concept where it's an understanding that social integration is a concept where devalued members of society are integrated into their communities, where identities and friendships are formed. There are three elements to integration, creating valued roles, participating in meaningful activities, and developing long-lasting relationships. Being integrated into his or her community gives a person with a disability a sense of purpose and identity. It also improves their self-esteem and quality of life. Jennifer wrote a letter, and she's asked me to read it for her. She's over here, I mean, I don't want to put the spotlight, so she...
She asked it.
So this is hers, by Jennifer Jackson, and I think, yeah, Aaron is passing it out. "My name is Jennifer Jackson. I'm a wheelchair-bound, 27-year-old female residing in Ketchikan, Alaska. I have lived here for most of my life, and we all know that there are very limited activities on this small island. And for people with compromised mobility such as myself, accessible activities become even more limited. If I were to see a play, I would have to make plans ahead with helpers and with event staff to even get into the part of the building necessary. In winter, I wouldn't be able to see any plays because the sidewalk is often covered in ice, making it unsafe, and the steepness, steepness is already dangerous enough. I feel excluded when I am not able to enter the theater with my friends. It can be embarrassing to have to trek down the block, through the basement, and up a creaky freight elevator to join my friends. It makes me feel like I am being made a spectacle of, and my grandmother needs a walker. And my grandmother, who needs a walker, would not make it down, up or down the hill, therefore she could not even have the opportunity others do. I simply wish that we all had equal access to activities in town. I feel so limited, and it, and is this the message we want to send to the disabled community? That we aren't important enough to have the same access as everyone else? I hope that you all will consider me and my disabled friends when making your decision. Thank you for your time and consideration, Jennifer Jackson." Anyway, so, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Aaron, why don't you come on up, since you're right there?
Thank you again, Jennifer and Janeway. Aaron Fong, I reside at 3930 L Hillside Road. This will be very brief. I work for Sale, Southeast Alaska Independent Living, and Sale likes for all businesses and facilities to be accessible. So, just thank you for having the request for ADA easement on tonight's agenda.
Thank you very much.
Just a few seconds.
We'll take a quick break for five seconds.
I'm going to go.
I know.
I know, it is. I thought some...
We need parks.
There's some cold air coming somewhere. Thank you. My head's cold.
All right, Mike, Ellerding, come on up, Mike.
Let's give you a hug, honey.
I'll hold you to that.
Good evening. Mike Ellerding, I reside at 344 Front Street, well, that's not my residence, my residence, 8317 Snodham Lane. I work at Coastal Real Estate. Today, during business hours, Mr. Ed Zastro, who represents the, he's the trustee and treasurer of the, of the Igloo number 16, gave me a letter and asked me to read it to you tonight, as he knew that we would be providing testimony to the hearing regarding access to the Performing Arts Center. So if you don't mind, I'll just read this letter from Mr. Zastro real quickly. "August 7th, Honorable Mayor Williams, Member of the City Council, the Pioneers of Alaska Igloo 16 is opposed to the loss of any public parking spaces in the immediate area of our Lodge Building at 314 Pioneer Alley. As aging membership and early darkness in the fall and winter months, coupled with some vision problems, require the shortest route possible to the Lodge Hall, our meetings have been scheduled to accommodate this vision problem within the past couple of years. Remembering that access to the Performing Arts Center Elks Lodge was available from the Pioneer Alley for years and was terminated by the Performing Arts Group, much to our disappointment. An option, or options, are still available without loss of public parking. Thank you for your consideration, Ed Zastro, trustee and member and treasurer of Igloo Lodge number 16." So that's from Mr. Zastro, apparently it's past his bedtime, but I'm going to stay up later. Now, for, for me and for Coastal Real Estate, we're not opposed to ADA access to the building, we're just opposed to using the ADA access veil, as it seems, to, to take public parking that is at a premium in, in downtown, in downtown Ketchikan. And, and it's, it seems to me that, that the Performing Arts Center wants it both ways. I, I can't quite determine whether they're saying that they're going to have a separate ADA access, taking out one parking spot, or how many other parking spots you're going to need, or whether they're going to have the, the main access to the building located off of, of a Main Street. But it, it, it seems a little confusing, or at least I'm not getting a clear picture from the testimony that I've heard tonight. It just seems a little duplicitous for the, for the Arts Council to say that we want this parking spot for the, for the ADA access, when it really seems like what they're asking for is the access to the building at that location at the expense of public parking. And, and the community, the city, has supported the Arts Council, and, and we're all very happy that the Arts Council's here, and they do good work, and nobody's speaking poorly of the Arts Council, we all love them, but, but we're not in support of taking public parking when, when they've been given the building, and now they're asking for more, because it seems like there's other alternatives that haven't been explored. And, and I, I have empathy for... And I have empathy for the people who have access problems to get into the building, but I just don't think that the Arts Council, or, excuse me, the Performing Arts Center, has done their homework, or done enough work to, and study what other alternatives are available. I mean, right now, just looking at the testimony from Mr. Zastro, or the letter from Mr. Zastro, that parking, that space was available, that access was available to the Performing Arts Center. They voluntarily surrendered that, and for whatever reasons, it may have been financial reason, that's all fine and good, but don't take a financial reason and then say, come back to the city and say, "Well, we want you to further subsidize this so that we can have this other access to our building." And I think there's also other creative ways that architects and engineers can design something off of the sidewalk on Main Street to gain access to the building that would allow people with disabilities to gain access without having to go through that lower office. So I'm concerned that parking's at a premium, that the, the reasons for creating the alternative access are not strictly for the benefit of ADA access. I think they're for the access to the building, and we're opposed to that. And so what we're trying to say is, we want to put a stop to the consideration of this loss of parking, because there's other alternatives that are available to the Performing Arts Center to gain access to the building. And so that's, you know, I'm not, forgive me, but I'm not, we're not an altruistic company. I mean, we're in business to make a profit, so we can pay our property taxes on the building, so we can, you know, get other services and all the rest of it. We like the Arts Council, we like the Performing Arts Center. We have empathy for people who have access problems in the buildings, but we think there's other alternatives to get this accomplished, and this taking parking away is not the right path to go.
Any questions, Deanne?
I understand there is a lot of concern on both sides of the coin. Again, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what we're trying to accomplish tonight is just to open the dialogue. I mean, we're not going to agree tonight to simply wipe out a parking space. I think what we're trying to do is open the dialogue, so that if there are other alternatives available, those can be explored. But then, my next thought is, we're talking about one parking space theoretically, if that is what it turns out to be. And I'm not really clear how the loss of one parking space could be that detrimental. And in terms of the Pioneer Igloo, I would think that would be an advantage to their aging population to have another access near their building for handicapped people that may want or need to use that facility for things as well. I don't think it's just a Performing Arts Center need necessarily. I mean, I think it could benefit, you know, other areas as well.
Perhaps, perhaps one of us is misinformed, because it's my impression that they're gonna take away parking, which would then eliminate parking that's available for the, for the, I keep saying Redmond, but it's the Igloo Number 16, the Pioneer's Alaska. That's gonna eliminate parking.
Eliminate one space that would be a handicap parking space that I'm sure if their population is aging, and elderly, they would use it too.
It's not, it's not a handicap parking, not creating a handicap parking, they're eliminating parking. Am I wrong? Am I misinformed, members? You're eliminating parking. It's not creating a handicap parking space. They're eliminating parking so they can gain access into that building. If this was a private sector company coming to you and saying, "Hey, we bought this great building with your help, thank you very much, and now we want you to provide us with additional space so that we can get access to this building that is not conventional or normal," you know, so we're having to ask the city to go through extra pains to eliminate parking that's available to all the public, because we want to have special access into our building that is...
I thought Mr. Smith mentioned van parking, you know, wheelchair van accessibility.
I defer Mr. Smith to answer, because I'm confused about that.
I am happy to speak. Just to say that what I did say is that if you move a handicap spot there, all of those spaces are very small. And some council members have already referred to that. One space closest to the street is already very difficult to park. If you added the additional three feet for a handicap parking spot, it would make another one of those spaces too small. So it would, in fact, mean that there were five spaces. But you could end up with five spaces, one of them being a handicap spot, in which the additional three feet would be access in, a level, quality access into the building from there, so that people could arrive to perform at the Christmas party, at class, what have you, together with their families.
So now we're losing two spaces?
No, you misunderstood me. We're losing one space. And I'll repeat it again, one space. Adding an additional handicap spot, but one space.
Thanks, Keith.
I'm sorry. But at any rate, if it was a private sector company coming to you and saying, "Hey, we got this building, and now we want, now we found that we have parking difficulties. We want to take public property to benefit our building for the use of access." I think that this would not be a topic for discussion, and I would like to put a lid on it tonight. It's much like, you know, when your child says, "Hey, I want this ice cream bar," or something like that. You say, "You know what? We're not gonna have that discussion, because this conversation is over." And I just don't think that dialogue is gonna be something that, certainly for us, it's not something that we want to continue.
Marty, did you have a question?
Deanne referred to, with her questions about the Pioneer.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you for your time.
Nancy McElte, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Nancy McElte, Talbot's Inc., 1101 Tongass Avenue. I'm here tonight to respectfully ask the city to remove the sign that the city recently placed near the top of the Berthfor ramp. The sole purpose of that sign is to steer cruise ship passengers out of the Berthfor area. The sign has two large arrows that directs passengers to the south, away from shops and businesses like ours. This new sign is unfair to our business and others in the area. It is unfair, because it directs passengers away from our store. This sign also breaches the agreement that Talbot's has with the city and others that governs the access of pedestrian traffic on the uplands of Berthfor to allow traffic to and from our property, which is adjacent to Berthfor. This sign is unlike the larger map the city placed near the top of the ramp and the Wayfarer signs the city has placed around town, where cruise ship passengers make a choice where they would like to go. This sign directs cruise ship passengers to a specific location away from Talbot's property and out of the Berthfor area with two arrows and the words downtown and pre-shuttle. This sign is not only detrimental to Talbot's property and business, but also to many others operating in and around where the sign is placed. Part of the Corps of Engineers' decision to issue the permit to allow Berthfor to be built was to reinvigorate and bring economic development and stability to the immediate area of Berthfor. The agreement between the city, Survey Point Holdings, Ketchikan Dock Company, and Talbot in part states that neither the city nor SPHKDC shall take any action to discourage or interfere with the access by cruise ship passengers to the Talbot's property. This sign with arrows has the sole purpose of directing cruise ship passengers out of the area. That not only goes against the Corps of Engineers, what they had in mind when they issued the Berthfor permit, it also breaches the agreement between the city, SPHKDC, and Talbot. There is no sign like this placed at the top of Berth3 ramp. If you placed it there, I doubt if it would be met with approval from businesses near Berth3. The sign you placed at Berth4 is wrong. It discourages commerce in the immediate area and must be removed. I have concerns that anyone wanting to weigh in on a sign that discourages commerce in the area didn't have opportunity to do so. I also have a concern that when I spoke with certain council members, they didn't even know about the agreement between Talbot, the city, and others. I also have a concern when I spoke with Mayor Lou Williams, he told me he forgot about the agreement. By the city placing this sign near the top of Berth4 ramp, the city is directing cruise ship passengers away from Talbot's property to downtown and parts unknown. The city is discouraging cruise ship passengers from accessing Talbot's property. It's that simple. It's a serious breach of the agreement. I realize city employees are compelled to do what the council directs them to do, and I would urge the council to have the sign removed. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Any questions for Nancy? Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the last person signed up. Is there anybody here that'd like to address the council that did not sign up tonight? CNN, we'll move on to the agenda. That brings us down to consent agenda. I had a couple of things I wanted to throw out for possible additions to the agenda, since we got a long one. Under 7A, new business, I was thinking 3, 4, 7, 9, and 10. Look at those. Does anybody have any problems with those? Take your time.
Well, Lou, I want some explanation of Number 10.
Number 10, we'll take off that.
Yes.
Anybody have a problem with 3, 4, 7, or 9?
About 6.
Well, we have to pick a day.
Okay.
All right, and then under 7B, I had 2 and 3 and 5.
We got questions on 2.
Okay, we'll cancel that. How about 3 and 5? Any problems on those? Hello, Carl, you want 3 after the executive session?
That's council discretion, Mr. Mayor.
We'll take that one off, too, so it doesn't sound like the council wants to do. Okay, so we have 5 to surplus profit. We'll put Number 5 down. Madam Clerk, do you have those?
I do.
One moment.
I have one question I wanted to get through.
Okay, and then I've missed one. I meant Number 8 also, on the building looking replacement procurement schedule.
So 7, 8, and 9?
Yep.
What? I'm sorry, 8?
7, 8, and 9.
I have some questions about it.
Oh, okay, we'll take that one off. Okay, so we're at 3, 4, 7, 9, and then 5 on D. Do we have a motion to consent? Do we have a second?
Second.
Moving to second. Madam Clerk, can you read items?
Approval of minutes, regular city council meeting of July 17, 2014, and special meeting of July 24, 2014. Exempting procurement of ProCom Alaska LLC Annual Maintenance Agreement from competitive bidding requirements. Budget transfer, museum programs, divisions, 2014 travel and training, and training and education accounts. Amendment Number 1 to designated legislative grant agreement, waterfront promenade, Thomas Basin Sewell repairs project. The second one-year renewal of contract Number 12-44, the 2012-2013 agreement for lobbying services, Ray Mattaschowski and Associates. Ordinance Number 141758, amending and repealing Ketchikan Municipal Code Title 1, prisoners-to-work suspended imposition of sentence, and Ketchikan Municipal Code Title 1 violations to comply with state law first reading. Ordinance Number 141760, amending and repealing certain sections of the Ketchikan Municipal Code Title 1, vehicles and traffic to adopt state statutes and regulations, first reading. Liquor license transfer of ownership, Old Town Liquor. Ordinance Number 141757, amending telecommunications service and rates, first reading. Change order Number 2, final to contract Number 1409, Roosevelt 4G LTE antenna and equipment placement, Hot Wire Communications LLC. Award of contract Number 1424, Revetment Way Sewer Replacement with Three Dog Construction Incorporated. Award of contract Number 1432, construction, administration, and inspection of Bar Harbor South Floats 1N and 9 Reconstruction PND Engineering Inc. Budget transfer, Centennial Building Electrical Upgrades, Channel Electric. Change order Number 4, contract Number 1308, Phase 3 of Berths 1 and 2 Rehabilitation Project with Orion Marine Contractors. Surplus of real property USS 1587, lots 2, 3, and 4.
All right. Did somebody have a question, Bob?
Yes, mine is on 5B2. There's a request for $4,600. And it specifically states that the delay to the contractor was due to the hybrid cable that was damaged. Is there any option where we go back to the cable company for some of those funds? Since it was directly related to their error?
Yes, Ed Cushing, Division Manager, KP Telecommunications. In that one, we did go back to the cable manufacturer. And the cable manufacturer paid, would not pay for our increased labor costs for the network. They did pay for the air freight charges and replacement cable to send us a new reel of this cable that takes...
Well, I understand that they replaced the cable, which they should have done, because it was a damaged cable.
Sure, right.
But we're incurring costs due to that damaged cable, and we're just gonna pay it.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, for an amount of this magnitude, if you wanted to try to force the issue and take legal action, you'd probably end up paying more legal costs than you would be paying now if you were to get done.
Bob, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, call the roll on, unless somebody else has anything else on consent. Call the roll on consent.
Harris?
Aye.
Zingy?
Aye.
Severson?
Yeah.
West?
Yeah.
Carlson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Brings us down to appointments to boards, and we have one, I believe. Jon Stewart, reappointment to the Ketchikan Historic Commission. Do we have any objections? CNN, he is officially appointed. That brings us down to New Business A, General Government Number 1, request for ADA access easement, Ketchikan Performing Arts Center. Yes.
I move the City Council authorize the city manager to negotiate with the Ketchikan Performing Arts Center and Coastal Real Estate regarding an ADA access easement through the McCaw parking lot. Said ADA access easement to be submitted to the City Council for formal consideration and approval.
Moving to second. Let Marty go first.
No, I was just gonna say, earlier in the discussion, Deanne made a very eloquent argument. I wouldn't add to that.
KJ?
I was just wondering if we could amend that to have it include the, what do you call it, pioneers, Igloo? So, because they're the ones that have that parking lot, and maybe there's some chance of, what can we deal that with? Because I want to see a deal worked out, if there's any possibility, and get all three parties in.
Well, that's private property, so I don't know if we can make them negotiate.
We can discuss with them.
Deanne?
Well, I'm not saying we can force them to, but I certainly think we could invite them to the conversation.
That's what I was trying to get. Thank you, Mayor.
Is that what the council feels like doing, Dick?
Well, that's all I can say. If we're not willing to try to work with the pioneers, then I'm not willing to support it. So I assume we're willing to work with them. And I guess I'm not really talking negotiation, I'm talking about sitting down and trying to work out a deal. Because this is not a negotiation, this is working out something that's acceptable to people. Use the words you want to, but that's what it is to me.
Is there a problem with the council that had them to also talk to the pioneers? CNN will make that part of the motion. Anybody else? Call the roll.
West?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Coos?
Yeah.
Harris?
Aye.
Severson?
No.
Zingy?
No.
Okay, that passes 5 to 2. That brings us down to 7, 8, 2, discussion of drug-free workplace. Councilmember Severson.
Well, I ask this because, you know, there are just a limited group of people within the city that it's mandatory to do randoms, and of course, that's related to federal standards on highway safety and stuff like that, and I just thought that, you know, with the way that things are going and the drug issues that are about, and of course, the ballot measures, when we talk about legalization and stuff, I thought it would be pertinent for us to step up and have a citywide subplan. It's a legal substance, and I see that from the letter that we received back from Human Resources that there's been some litigations and things that have happened in other states in regard to this. So I guess Carl... that there's been some litigations and things that have happened in other states in regard to this, so I guess Carl, wanna elaborate any on that?
I defer to the HR manager and the city.
Matt?
Just that it violates the Fourth Amendment right, is what they found, especially in the city of Key West. And the municipality of Anchorage lost a case as well back in 2001, so it's unconstitutional is what I've been reading.
So how does he do it for CDL?
CDL, it's a federally mandated regulation.
Mitch, did you want to add?
I guess it's okay for Ted, it's not okay for everybody else.
Pretty much. Is that the way it works?
I've been reading the same thing as three. Without a showing of special needs, you can't have suspicion of drug testing in the public sector.
Can we send our drug doctor?
Pardon me?
Oh, I said, can we send our drug dog through?
Oh.
Just being funny. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Before they get away.
Oh, hey.
Hey.
Hurry. Great.
I mean, I say, hey, I'm sorry, Bob, but hey.
Okay, how does vigor get away with it?
They're not a government entity.
What's the difference between a government and private business?
We're considered government, search and seizure.
I don't care, we're private business.
I'm arguing against it, I'm just providing you with the information that I found.
You know, we, you know, 10 years ago, maybe it wasn't a big problem. Today, we got a big drug problem in this town. If we don't set the example, then we're the bad guy, as far as I'm concerned. And so I think we'll start this council right here and stand up, and they will do it, and we're employees, we're gonna do it too.
Mitchman?
And I don't care what the rules are, just fix them.
That's the problem you got, you got to care.
Well, we can fix the rules.
You can't do it with your, you absolutely can't do it with your, your employees who are within a collective bargaining agreement. That is, that's something that's gotta be bargained. Your non-represented employees, I mean, it's still, it's considered unconstitutional.
We bargain.
We tried to bargain a few years ago, and we, I think, didn't we have the firefighters?
We had the firefighters.
Our inability to bring in the police, the council concluded that we should not do it with the firefighters, and we've released them from that commitment.
So what if they show up and they can't work?
Then you have suspicion.
Yes, then you have suspicion.
But it's too late. No, if they're on a job and they're out there and they can't do the work, it's too late. They hurt themselves. Anyway, I, I'll be quiet.
Thanks, Nick, I wanted you to make sure you said your point. Thank you, everybody. All right, Bob, do you have anything else?
I thought it'd be weird now.
What about us doing it? Can we control ourselves? What does that take?
Well.
Could talk to the lawyer, or we can do it ourselves?
Go talk to Mitchman and see what you can do, come up with an idea.
Probably an excuse.
All right, that brings us seven, eight, five. Yeah, Matt?
Yeah, sorry, you guys got a little garbled there. We're still on the last discussion about the drug-free stuff, correct?
Well, we're just finishing, but add to it.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm opposed to this. I, I've never used illegal drugs. I don't drink, I don't smoke. Not quite sure why. But, you know, the whole idea that we have to test somebody, especially in line of whether something's going to become legal or not legal, and something they do in their recreational time, or something that they do off-duty, kind of disturbs me and bothers me, and it just comes from, from this standpoint. Where, where does the testing end? And if what they're doing on their, if we're really gonna get into controlling what they're doing in their off-time, and we're talking about marijuana, we're talking about drugs, what's to stop us from going to, you know what? Our health costs would go down if we eliminate smokers, and maybe even drinkers, and then testing for those. And I, I just think we're going down a slippery slope. And the other aspect of this, and this is, this is the educator coming out of me, and this bothered me when I was on a school board, is the whole responsibility action, and item for all this. You know, if, if I go home and I have a couple of drinks on, or, you know, Friday night, have a really good Saturday, but everything's fine and dandy on Monday morning, then everything should be fine and dandy. You shouldn't have to worry about me, and if I do other things, if I'm coming to work and I'm not exhibiting any of those items, or any that I'm under the influence, why are we automatically going to this cloud of suspicion over everybody with the testing? So, I'm, I'm opposed to it, and it, and it kind of bothers me.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
That brings us down to item seven, eight, five, the community priority list. Do we have a motion?
Excuse me, Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Um, let me...
Seven, eight, five.
Okay. I move the City Council approve the city of Ketchikan and Ketchikan Public Utilities Priority for inclusion in the 2016 Community Priority List as detailed in the city manager's report dated July the 25th, 2014, and/or as modified by the City Council.
Second. Who did second it? Marty?
I really don't have anything to add.
Anybody else?
So, if I understand this correctly, the priorities that you have listed, one, two, three, I mean, one is the highest priority? 'Cause I'm, I was just a little concerned. We've just had all this information about our failing sewer system, pipes and all that type of stuff, and I was kind of thinking that that might be more important than the hole in the wall? I'm sure you're all aware of the pipe that, problems that they just had in California recently, and how many millions of, that was water, blessedly not sewer. I just had, after Cliff had showed us those rusted culverts or pipes, whatever, I just, after I read that in there, I just had visions of all of our pipes popping open around town, and I think we need to, to...
Target.
I'm just wondering if hole in the wall should really should be the top priority. I'm worried about our pipes.
I, I take no exception to your comment. The number one priority that I'm recommending be on the list will be Seepa Swan Lake Reservoir Expansion. That was in the narrative. I just did not have access to the information I needed. That's gonna be available on Monday. I got a email from Trey Acton to that effect today. Relative to the harbor versus the utilities, recommended the harbors, because I think our chances of getting funding are likely to be higher. It's not as competitive a program as the utilities. If the council wants to switch those, I have no objection to that. That, that's totally your call, and I'm comfortable with that.
I'm just really worried about those pipes.
So we got seven, excuse me, we got seven priorities then?
I think there's seven, six.
That's what I recommended in my narrative.
That'll make seven priorities.
Correct.
Anybody else? Julie? I'm Julie. Sorry.
Just so I understand the procedure, so now the borough and the city and Saxman are gonna work together to come up with one
Yeah, well.
list? Well, I'm saying...
Based on the, the action that the Assembly took at its meeting on Monday, that's my understanding. What I'm recommending for the list to go to the governor, again, would be Seepa Swan Lake Reservation, uh, Swan Lake Reservoir Expansion Project is one, and then the sales scores bridge is two. And see if we can get agreement between the Assembly, Saxman, and the city. I would presume that it's likely that Saxman, again, will be recommending the Mahoney Lake Project as its number one priority, and I can't tell you how that will shake out if the lobbying can...
So they recommend that it goes to the group meeting, correct?
I'm sorry?
The what?
It's been community, um...
Community, the group, right.
Yeah, public relations, so that's where it's going next.
I, I believe that's what the borough...
And that meeting is a week from tomorrow.
Correct.
And I encourage, I mean, I'm all for sticking together with the boroughs, since whatever we've done over the last several years, whatever we made our number one project, either airport, or Swan Lake, or whatever we've had, it's always been, it's always been funded, and I think being together and having a group combine number one, that carries a good lot of weight up there, and they, they look to fund that, so that's mine. All right, anybody else have any comments? Go ahead.
You have longer arm.
You're close enough to hit me.
So is this the point where we need to add Swan Lake to the list?
Well, I, I took the city priorities that I had and listed them one through six. And then in my narrative, it was my recommendation to the council that at the top of our list be Swan Lake. If the motion is adopted, I assume you're taking the, you know, all of my report and following through on what I'm saying, so I would put Swan.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that this, we weren't bypassing this, that we weren't somehow leaving Swan Lake out as number one.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, I, I support what Carl said about Swan Lake. I think it needs to be the top of the community. I, I'm gonna make another comment. In last year, or in this year's budget, we took working with the borough out of the fly-in, and it was very simply splitting the cost of the reception, and there was no alcohol involved, and I think that was a serious mistake. This year, we, when we do the budget, whoever does the budget, we need to add it back in, and I would strongly suggest that we consider splitting what we spent last year on that fly-in, because we benefited. And that four or $5,000 of splitting that cost of the reception, and there was no alcohol up there, paid in that party, that we do it. And if we think that's worthwhile, we can bring it back and put it in, and put it back in and split it with them, because it was a bone of contention. That's all we've done is create some bones around them. We don't need them. But, anyway, I, I like, I like the list, debatable whether or not we should have sewer and water up front like Deanne said, because it's one that we know we gotta fix. Some of the others, how long do we let them drag? I don't know. But otherwise, the list as a whole is a good list.
Carl, what do you think on that French, go ahead?
I'm sorry?
Well, I was just wondering what you thought of that French Street, since that's gonna be the quickest thing being done on funding for us doing our ti, our pipes while they're doing the road.
I, I don't know how quickly Front Street is gonna be done. I think the other two projects, Shawan Bar and Chatham, if the ballot propositions are passed, I think they're likely to score higher on AEC's priority list.
So, the Front Street, when do they plan on doing that? The last election I heard was in 2015?
I think it is still up in the air. They, they keep moving it around on the step. Cliff, do you want?
Cliff Allen, Public Works Director, City Engineer, Manager Amalon is correct. It's been there for a couple of years. It's been out there a couple of years, but we're not seeing any real movement on part of the state to, to really lock it in. And that said, I, I don't see it being ready to go. I just don't see that. And, and we're really not getting any clear direction from the state, one way or another. So I'd say several years at best.
Oh, wow. Okay, I thought you were gonna be real serious. Bob?
And, and I don't disagree, see, the conversations I've had, that's just about where we're at. Is there any advantage in us requesting that they at least do some paving?
How many times?
To help us out a little bit?
Every time we comment on the step, that is a comment that we put in, that they have to do some interim work, especially along Mill Street where it's sort of washed, boarded out, and it just falls on deaf ears.
And I know that comes from staff, there's a way that we can do that from the council resolution. We gotta do something to move this thing forward, 'cause it's getting bad.
I can bring a resolution.
I would. That'd be wonderful.
Yeah.
I believe we have a DOT representative in town again tomorrow, and for at least two years, we routinely put them in a vehicle. I think now I'll start to top them off with hot coffee and take them around the drive here. Yes, it's bad.
They could start at McDonald's.
Thank you very much, Cliff.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, if it is council's prerogative, we can put the three utility projects ahead of the two harbor projects?
Well, I don't know if that's a clear thing or not. Do people wanna switch things around?
I could sleep in her.
Anybody else wanna move the utility projects?
I'd like to comment.
Yes.
I think Carl's right. There's, you look at what's in front of you and what you have the best advantage of achieving, and I think that our harbor department has a pretty good idea of what's out there and funding available for, for this type of project. And I am concerned about what's gonna be available in the utility stuff. I just don't think there's gonna be a lot there. So, I, I think it's fine the way it is, and truthfully, I think after it goes through the committees and gets into the book and stuff, and it, and it goes north, it's gonna be, they're gonna look at all Ketchikan as one, and we're just gonna see what's gonna benefit the people more.
Dick?
Yeah, Carl, on the two harbor projects, is that money coming from that special harbor fund they got, or is it different money?
To Mr. Corpron?
Is it really going through the legislative priority request from us?
Port and Harbors Director Steve Corpron. As far as I know, this is just to show that you support or desire the money from a 50/50 harbor grant program. We're not asking for additional money.
No, but the money will show up if we're successful in the governor's draft budget.
Correct. The last few years, there's been about 10 million available.
In the draft budget.
Right, draft capital budget.
Any other questions?
And I wouldn't stress too much about where you rank those projects on this list, because what's being scored is already there, and you ranked Hole in the Wall number one, and Thomas Basin, Thomas Street ramp number two on your Port and Harbors, on your Harbors 2014 CIP budget last year. So that is the proof that I had sent in with that. They wanna see if it's the number one priority, number two priority projects in your budget, and it was in the harbor budget you guys signed off on last year. So, we're covered on the priorities. It really doesn't make any difference where you sort these, these here.
Matt, did you have something?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna raise the same concern I did last year about not including the rest of the hospital funding. I'm just going off of memory here. But the total project is gonna run into 76 million, and we've only funded the 63. I think at some point, we need to, now that we've begun construction, and it's not a priority now, but it's going to become a priority, I think we need to add priority number seven, phase two and three of the medical center construction.
Carl, do you want to add anything to that?
Councilmember Olson, if I could, I had a conversation about that very issue with our legislative lobbyist.
Hey, Carl, you're breaking up really bad. Could you lean a little closer?
Try again.
Is this any better?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
I had a conversation with our legislative lobbyist on this issue about two weeks ago, and it was his recommendation that this would not be an appropriate year to submit that request. We're not far along, far enough along on phase one. The more important concern is, the council has just authorized NAC Architecture to begin the design of phase two. We have a very preliminary number. I don't wanna submit a number and then 12 months from now find out that it was low, and then have to go back even with a higher number. That, that would not be received well. So it was his recommendation that we finish the phase two design, get a number we're much more comfortable with, and then make the request.
Did you hear that, Matt?
Okay. I, I did. Thank you. I understand that completely. But here's my next question. That is it going to be staff's intent to bring back a request that is 50% of the funding, or 100% of the funding for phase two and three? Because quite frankly, I think it should be 100%, since we're already kicking in 43 million.
That, that's something that we will tee up for the council, for the council to decide. Again, based on the conversations that I had with Mr. Mattaschowski, and I think you're gonna see the same position taken... and I think you're gonna see the same position taken by C P O relative to their request for the Swan Lake project this session. It's very unlikely that the legislature is gonna fund a hundred percent of a project like that. At best, they're probably gonna be looking at fifty percent.
Anything else, Matt?
I di- I didn't hear the last of it, at best, it's gonna be what?
Fifty percent.
Okay, well, I, I guess my point here is, is that we heard that same thing last time, and we got thirty-three percent instead of, um, fifty percent. So, I'm a little concerned about that coming from the state, and was just, I, I understand the argument, um, but it, I, I don't know how we can relate that up there, that we have this big project coming up, and we're, we're looking for a little more assistance than just fifty percent on this, since we're already funding a strong majority.
That can be our strategy.
Good, thank you.
All right. All right, we're on the priority, let's see again. Call it.
Uh, I'm gonna move to amend this and swap priorities two and three. Put one of the, put one, um, harbor project in, and one, uh, of the other water projects in, and then so that we at least wait to give to the governor, instead of two copies there on the harbor and, and two water, we do something like that.
So you wanna switch three to two and two to three?
Yeah, just swap to two.
Okay, the motion is to switch two and three. Do we have a second? Moving second. Call a roll and see what happens. On the memo.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Okay.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
All right, they're switched. Call the main motion, please.
Zingy?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Harris? Seaverton?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. And that's why that brings us to...
Lou, can we take one?
Take five.
I'm old.
All right, five-minute break.
I didn't want my parents to worry, yes.
Love you all.
Yeah, the fourth is a Saturday and I. The understanding is that the perm funds are gonna be deposited on the second. And that the checks are being mailed out the same day, I don't know. That's what I'm told.
I don't know.
I don't either.
We want to defer until we get further information.
Let's defer to next meeting.
Okay. I move it for.
Moved in second. Call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harris? Olson?
Here, sorry, yeah.
West?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yeah.
Zingy?
Yes.
All right, thanks Judy. We'll check into that before we do anything. Um, that brings us down to. I believe item eight revised procurement schedules in Centennial Building roof replacement. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council authorize the City Manager to proceed with the procurement of the replacement of the Centennial Building roof. As detailed in the Public Works Director's Report dated July the twenty ninth, twenty fourteen.
Second.
Moved in second. Who had the question on that?
Judy.
I did.
Yes Judy.
I guess I'm wrong.
So, I'm trying to understand, we spent sixty-five thousand dollars to fix one leak. And what that didn't work, or? I mean, I don't understand.
The, uh, we just looked at the memo, sixty-five seemed high to me and all I found was a memo to Coogan, it was twenty-seven. Regardless, what that did was it addressed a long deteriorated stretch on one of the parapets. And again, the parapet is, I guess that upper wall above the roof. This patch, if you will, covers. Five, maybe ten percent of the roof, probably closer to five. But the entire roof is deteriorating. Best of our record, it shows this roof to be thirty to thirty-three years old. And it should've given us a twenty to twenty-five year life. So, we had to put that patch on because it was leaking all over the place. It was just a continuous line of deterioration. There is more of that on the remainder of the roof.
Any other questions?
No, it just seems like we're putting lipstick on a pig.
I've heard that somewhere before. Call the roll please. Thanks.
Lou?
Yeah, Matt.
Yeah, I just, I understand the need to do this, but I. I'm, I'm hardcore and we're spending this money and we're, we're sitting here and we're making. Moves ahead with the roof and we're making moves ahead and, and we've tasked. A committee, well, the committee doesn't have a full. The full capabilities it once had because of a change. Uh, you still ask for the committee to come back with recommendations and here we are moving forward and I, I have a. Suspicious feeling that within no time if the council continues to move forward with these. Recommendations, the committee is going to look at the job they're doing and wonder why the hell they're doing.
Well, I think this is just regular ma- I mean, we gotta do the maintenance and, um, on this thing to start.
I understand that, but it's, but it comes down to you, you've got a group of people who are, I mean, quite frankly, they're working pretty hard.
Well, we want them to keep working.
I just hate to take that voice away and alienate a group that's out there looking at the future of the building. And it seems like we're just kind of going ahead and doing it anyways.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Yes.
So, has the committee, did, have, have they had input? On this roof and this repair, or I guess, I, I assume they did.
This has been done at the staff level. The committee, over the last several months, has been working on a mission statement and a core values statement. The council talked about this at the time they formed. Uh, I instructed the museum director, before we even start looking at any physical improvements to the building, that. I want the, the mission statement and the core values statement to come to council to make sure everybody's on, on the same page. Once that's done, they're, they're gonna then start looking at the building. Council's direction was that the Centennial Building is gonna be the place. Centennial Building and the Heritage Center are gonna be the structures that are gonna be occupied. And they'll start looking at what needs to be done in the context of the mission statement and the core values statement to those buildings. If council doesn't agree with that, I mean, then you're starting to look about relocating to another facility.
I guess, I must have misunderstood, I thought that that's what this committee. Was charged with doing was bringing back to the council what we wanted. How we wanted to move forward with this building. That's what I understood.
If I could defer to Anita.
Good evening, I'm Anita Maxwell, I'm the Senior Curator of Programs for the museum, I'm also Acting Director while Lacey is on vacation. My understanding is the Museum Advisory Board, it was, as Mr. Amalon stated, it, we've started with the mission statement, we've started with the core values, really to. Make sure that we're all on the same page, we're all committed, yes. This commit- this community needs a museum. The reality of the roof situation, and to take a step back, is that committee was charged to come back by October, I believe. Um, with a recommendation. We are at the point with the roof, and I think Cliff can allude to this, is while it's had a Band-Aid on it, we are at a, a life and safety issue. Um, at this point, we have a, a public trust of, of all of these amazing artifacts. And the roof is, has outlived its, its usable, uh, usable life by twofold, apparently. Um, so the reality is, as the committee wants to move forward and how to make this. A, a functional and thriving museum in the Centennial Building, the key is, we need a. Basic life and safety of having a decent roof. We're, we're spending a lot of time as staff, putting Band-Aids on the inside as well, we've now had some track lighting that has gone out. Uh, we're now down to some fluorescent lights because of roof leaks. This is, this is basic, you know, basic home repair at this point of our roof, it continues to leak, this is a fix. That we absolutely needs to happen.
Judy? Answer your question.
Yeah, well, it doesn't really answer my question, I mean, I, I guess to me, I thought. So, in the meantime, the committee. I mean, what are, what are they doing, I mean, it does, it seems like it's kind of superficial, that they really don't have any. Teeth in the say of what we do at the museum, and that's what I thought. The group, I thought that's why they were created.
They are put together, we're starting with that mission statement, and so we know what we want to, the direction we wanna go with the museum.
So, can this not be postponed until they have a say in what they think should happen?
Well, this is general maintenance to me, I mean, we got a leak in the roof.
Regardless of whether the museum occupies the Centennial Building. Okay? This work has to be done, the city owns that building. If you wanna sell it at some point down the road, if you wanna. Let me step back. If you wanna broaden. The, the mission of the advisory board. To evaluate whether you should stay in the Centennial Building or move to another location, we certainly can do that. Regardless of that, we own the building. We're not gonna have a new museum in another year or two years if we go somewhere else. So, we're gonna have to occupy that building. The roof is gonna have to be fixed. And the electrical upgrades are gonna have to be done if people are gonna continue to occupy the building.
Absolutely.
So, the key is if they continue to occupy the building. I mean, I'm just thinking, now of a sudden, it's an emergency, we've had. We've had infrastructure falling apart for years and it wasn't an emergency, and now it's an emergency and we should spend three hundred thousand dollars, and. I'm just trying to understand this.
All due respect, we're not bringing this forward as an emergency. We did that when it was actively leaking in, was it December of last year? Right now, we're trying to plan ahead. We wanna do this during the winter months, during the off-season. Uh, the reason it's, it's on the agenda is, is we have it. As a CIP technically for twenty fifteen. We wanna accelerate that just enough so we know we can get this thing done by, say, March of next year. I wanna pull that trigger in about November or December if needed. We know we have leakage, I don't want it to become an emergency. And, and again, it's, in all due respect, the building needs a roof. Whether we sell it to someone or donate it to someone, the first thing I'm gonna say is, how's the roof? Uh, just like selling your house, you know, if you sell it with a leaking roof, you're gonna knock that price down quite a bit.
Dan?
What we're doing now though. So, we appropriated three hundred and twenty thousand for capital improvements in twenty fifteen. We're just asking for forty-two thousand of that early.
That's already encumbered, the, the design contract to get this done is already encumbered. So, we're not asking for any money right now, we just wanna say, can we go, can we move forward, can we advertise this thing in?
But we're not going to spend more than three hundred and twenty thousand.
No. No, the design fees are already encumbered.
And is that for roof and lighting? Was that for roof and lighting?
No, that's just for the design getting.
And if a contract is put in place before the end of the year, we'll come back with a budget transfer for three hundred and twenty thousand because it hasn't been appropriated yet. It's been programmed for two thousand fifteen, but not.
Right, we programmed it, so we actually literally programmed it into the budget for twenty fifteen.
Yep. I've come out of Public Works Sales Tax.
Public Works Sales Tax.
Okay. Let's call the roll.
Hey Lou?
Yeah. Matt.
And my, my whole point here is that we have this committee and, and we've got. Other things going on, and I think it would be a good idea to make sure that when we have this kind of stuff coming forward, that we've touched base with the committee and let them know we're doing this work. So that regardless of where the committee is at in their process, they're aware of where the council is at. And where city staff is at in terms of what's moving forward, so they can act as an advisory board and, and make suggestions. There might be some good suggestions in terms of the design. Um, maybe an expansion of the group or doing something. I, I mean, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there, but I think it'd be prudent to make sure this goes in front of that committee as well.
Bob?
Yeah, I, I, along the same lines as Matt. Uh, we made the decision that this is the building that's gonna house our museum and the committee is working on. Our mission statement and where we're gonna go with that in hopes to give us some kind of a, um. You know, some ideas on design in the future as we improve parts of the building and what we need to do to make it all work with the, with our mission statement, so. Again, I, I agree with Cliff and Carl that the roof's leaking and we need to fix it.
All right, call the roll.
Coos?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yeah.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
No.
Zingy?
No.
Harris?
Yep.
West?
Yes.
Okay, that passes five to two. And that brings us down to item. Are we on ten?
Yes.
Yeah, word of contract fourteen thirty-five berth three site improvement P and D engineer, somebody had a question on this.
Yeah, Your Honor, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Bob, I think.
Uh, I move the City Council to approve contract number fourteen thirty-five. Birth three site improvement between City of Ketchikan P and D Engineer Incorporated and amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand five hundred eighty dollars. Authorize the funding from the Port Department's, uh, two thousand fourteen berth three expansion joint replacement capital account and direct the City Manager to execute the documents on behalf of the City Council.
Same. Moved in second, Dick.
Okay, my questions are, and probably Mr. Steve will have to answer them, and.
Steve, can you come up?
We'll go to page two twenty-four and it's got the scope of the contract. Get up to two twenty-four.
I don't have a computer, so I didn't know what page.
Oh, two twenty-four is just the scope in the contract that says what's being done by the P and D, and I don't know what it is on your, uh. Says, in this case, here may be A one of one.
There should be a page number.
A, A one of one on your, and what you've got maybe, in the iPad, it's two twenty-four.
It's A one of one, Steve. To exhibit A.
But just to clarify some things, which was, I didn't realize this was the plan, one. Was taking out the concrete sidewalk clear from the backside of Tongis Trading to the current one, I, I know we were gonna, the talk was to take out some of it because people were stepping off of it. And falling. And that may be okay, but then I get down to the next item and we want to put bollards along the full length of that, and I'm really concerned about. How the tour buses park and avoid bollards and avoiding doors whenever the bollards are fixed and buses are never the same length in the same place. I, I think we're creating a problem with having a line of bollards that you gotta park alongside and unload, unload from. That's my problem, and, and I don't know what the answer is unless it's a painted line. But I know you're trying to separate people from the buses, but. I'm concerned about the bollard situation.
If we, Steve Coburn, Port Harbors Director. If we mimic the same pattern we've used on berth one and two, it would be a ten-foot spacing. Uh, what we can do in this last month of the season. We can check and see where the ten foots would land down there and see what, what an issue would be, uh, on the current, how the buses lay out.
You mean, just the ten-foot wide sidewalk? You said ten-foot spacing.
Between the bollards, so. Yeah, so.
Well, and I, and I say, probably the spacing is immaterial because you've got buses that are, you've got vans and you've got, you've got medium buses and you've got long buses and you've got trolleys and. It, when you stack them in there in random lengths and you never know how they're coming in, you don't know. You're, all of a sudden, you're taking up space because you're jockeying to miss a bollard for a door, that's all I'm saying, and I don't know how they work it out.
And that's, what I was saying is that we'll take a look and see. We can put some marks down there where, if we went with the ten-foot spacing taken off from where they start now. And we can look at how they park down there and see how, if that's gonna be an issue, are we wasting a lot, or are we just talking a foot or two once in a while? We'll, we'll look at it. I know the, um, historic Ketchikan, uh, really wants to help delineate. The waterfront promenade with these round wooden bollards for the length of the promenade, wh- whenever it's not fenced like on the, the promenade between three and four. So, that was our intent, uh, we can take a hard look at it.
Any other questions?
I, I guess, for the full length of that, I, I'm not too sure we really need to take out the whole of concrete sidewalk, it just needed to be sloped something up to the front where people. First made that first jump off, anyway, yeah, they can engineer it and then we can figure out whether we wanna buy it or not.
If we try to slope the whole thing, it just gets really spendy, the, uh, the two-foot wide steel plates that form the last two inches to zero inches. That's milled steel, that's how they make that, so it's just. To do behind the KVB, w- it was a hundred eighty thousand dollars just for the steel plates.
I wouldn't slope it with steel, I'd just lay in a concrete. So. Do your cost your money and then.
But you can't take concrete to zero. And what they do on a, a normal curb cut, you'll have the rubber section there that gets poured in, or put in later, so you're only talking this much, but. If you did that for four hundred feet, it's, it's gonna be a maintenance nightmare, it's gonna be expensive, so that's why they. That, that, that sidewalk down there is just laid on top of berth three, when they, when they built berth three. The easiest way to clear it out was just, just to scrape it out.
Yeah, we'll see what they do.
Now, give us a report on how it goes.
We'll, we'll bring, we'll bring back a design, this isn't, we're not awarding a, a construction contract tonight, we're, we're awarding the start of a design contract.
Yeah, and I realize that's what you're doing, you know.
Thanks. Anybody else? Call the roll.
Harris? Zingy?
Aye.
Seaverton?
Yeah.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven, nothing, that brings us down to, um, seven eight eleven, Resolution fourteen twenty-five sixty-three, providing for the, um. Submission of, to qualified voters of the city in the municipal election to be held in the city October seventh, two thousand fourteen. Proposition, proposition, um, regarding issuance of wastewater revenue bonds not to exceed five million. For sewer main replacement projects in Shonbar Road, Chatham Ave., Front Mills, Stedman Street, do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council rescind Resolution number fourteen dash two five five seven and approve Resolution number fourteen two five six three. Providing submission of the qualified voters of the city at the municipal election to be held in the city in October seventh, two thousand fourteen of the proposition. As to whether the city should issue wastewater revenue bond and the principal amount not to exceed five million to provide funds for sewer main. Replacement projects in Shonbar Road, Chatham Avenue and Front Mills, Stedman Street in establishment effective date.
Moved in second. All right, Marty, Bob?
Yeah, I think that, uh, you know, of course, we've been talking about our infrastructure for a long time and I'm concerned about our debt. Level, um, and I'm not sure. Dog wagging tail here or not. But, um, I think it's important for the community to understand and have a say-so in it, so I think that's the. Good way to move forward.
The only guy, sorry, I missed the last meeting, my only comment is, I mean, we need to, um, also, I mean, if we're going to, um, make an effort to. Tell them that they possibly could have a eleven or fourteen percent increase in the wastewater. You know? It's even worse if we don't get these bonds because we gotta, uh, this, the way we can do this is get matching with, um, the state, and state's gonna pay seventy percent, and our guy's is gonna be thirty. And if we don't do that and match it, um, ours is gonna be a hundred percent. So, I mean, this is the best economical way to go ahead and do this. Um, you don't have to sit there and, um, you know, that year, year comes to the budget, it's up to the council, we can, um, raise the wastewater rates or we can take some money out of, um. Reserves or move something out of Public Works Sales Tax, I mean, there's other ways and, cause, um, these are smaller, um, bonds, but. We've done a lot of these to do a lot of these projects and it works really good because we're not stuck with seventy percent of the, um, costs, so. I just don't want people to look at this and fear, oh, there we're gonna have this increase, cause mainly we spend this over time, I mean, the last ones, we, just a couple meetings ago. Um, earlier this year, we got rid of, uh, we didn't spend all of the ten million dollar bond that we had out for ten years and, um. I think we gave up nine hundred thousand that we never spent, so it's not like we're gonna go out there and sell these five million in, uh, one year, um, it could take several years, so. I wanna make sure everybody's out there, if you guys go ahead with this and, and, um, and let the people know, um, talk to, um, people that are concerned. What this means, cause it's, um, if we don't, um, if we're not gonna be working with the state to get, um, the seventy percent. Uh, we're gonna be sitting here with a bigger, um, be asking our voters for a lot more.
Anybody else, Dick and then Marty.
Yeah, uh, well, Mr. Mayor, I started this thing and I still think that that rate needs to be there. Because I'm gonna look back at the fire station and the library, and we told them nothing about what it's gonna cost.
Well, I disagree with you, we told people it's gonna cost money, and I know that's the rumor out there, that everybody says it wasn't on the ballot, but. We told people it could cost them, I mean, they're gonna have, if they're gonna approve it, they're gonna be paying for it, cause I was one of the people saying it, so, but go on, Dick.
But every, and. Everything this city does costs people money.
Exactly.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean it's right.
I understand.
And so, I think it's our job to disclose to them what it's gonna cost. And that's, and that's all this does, cause if I was doing this, I'd put forty percent on there in five years. And I, and I'm not against this thing, I'm just saying that people need to know. Because they vote on something and then, and then all of a sudden, we're the bad guys. And, uh, so anyway, I, it's okay the way it is, I guess.
Anybody else? Marty?
Yeah, I.
Hold on, Matt.
Okay, thank you.
No, I, um, I agree with Lou on this, I, I think it's important for people to know that it's gonna cost and what it's gonna cost, but. I do have some concerns on the ballot measure where it really doesn't give the specificity that's required, that. The nature of this is that if we don't approve these bonds, if we do try to go it alone, that the cost will be, you know. Exponentially more. I, I don't know how much you could put on a ballot to, to get all that information on there, but. I don't, I, I really do have concerns that it just makes it, it just puts the thing, you know, your, your water rates are gonna go up, well, your water rates are really gonna go up if we don't do it. So.
Matt?
Yeah, thanks Lou, um, yeah, I agree with you and Marty, I, I think, I, I, there's, there's two things, one, um. The, the phrase that it could go up by as much as fourteen percent, I think, uh, that might need to say fourteen percent or. Whatever fourteen percent is of the usual residential. And then on top of that, add, if this is not approved, if we, if the city is liable for one hundred percent, your rates could potentially go up by. This much, whatever percentage it is fifty. And then the dollar amount, I think the dollar amount means more than a percentage amount to people.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Marty?
Is there, Carl, is there a way to estimate what the, the potential rate increase could be if for a catastrophic failure that could very well happen?
With, with all due respect, Councilmember West, you're asking us to write the never-ending ballot.
I know, I'm sorry. Never-ending ballot.
What you, what you're gonna have to do, or what we're gonna have to do as staff. If you're going to insist that this language is gonna be part of the ballot proposition, and I, I happen to agree with the mayor and Councilmember West and Olson. Staff's gonna have to get out there and basically try to sell it and. Tell, try to explain to the community. That you're absolutely right. If these bonds aren't passed and we're forced to pay a hundred percent. Rates are gonna go up exponentially. Or if we don't, simply don't do the work, then we're gonna have another Hawkins Denali and it's gonna cost that much more. And there won't be the seventy percent at, at, at that time. And we'll go out with Cliff's pipe and the pictures and, and show people. If, and, and, and try to sell the ballot proposition. But, in my professional opinion, leaving the language as it's been drafted on, on the increases. You're, you're tying one hand behind our backs bef- before we even get started. It's gonna be very hard for these kind of propositions to be passed. You're, you're putting a negative on it. Get it into the, to the ballot.
Bob?
You know, I, I agree with the fact that we need to get this bond passed. And, but I also agree, I think that we need to have that educational package out there to make the community aware. Um, so I was gonna suggest that we do put in funding for a campaign to, um. Completely explain the fact that, you know, it is a good deal to have these bonds, uh, as compared to doing it by yourself. And whatever that's gonna take before the, uh, bonding proposition, uh, I think we need to have our. Individuals voting fully educated on the subject so they don't come back later and say, well, I didn't know.
All right, oh, Judy and Dick.
Yeah, I mean, I agree they. There needs to be something, I just don't know if putting it on the ballot is the way to go when I look at this. I wonder if we should have maybe some town halls where Cliff shows up with the pipe? And. An opportunity for people to ask questions and get some answers and maybe do that instead of putting this language on there, but just making. A real effort to make sure people are educated about why we're doing this.
Dick?
Yeah, you know, Matt didn't have a bad suggestion about adding the fact that this will be matched by what, seventy percent or whatever it is? You, you could probably add that to it where it, it tends to counterbalance it, but I still think we're worried about. I think, I, I feel we're hiding something when we, when we refuse to put it on there and then not tell them. Either that or we go out to an education campaign or something. But adding the seventy percent or X number of dollars to it that will be added to the state.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask Mr. Newell a question, he could come up to the podium. Do we have time to go back and make further revisions to the ballot proposition, or are we up against?
We have one more opportunity, we have to have the council approve the resolution before August twenty-fifth. We have one more shot at it.
If, if you want us to try to work with bond council to craft language about the implications.
Well, I don't wanna get into the implications, but if you wanted to put the, mention that there was, um, the state would be paying for seventy percent of these costs, something like that, if that's possible, that's great, but. Madam Plurk had a comment too, I believe.
I do, and I, honestly, as someone who has run elections for a long time, what people will read is they'll read the title, wastewater bonds, five million dollars. And then they'll glaze over until they get to the bottom, this could raise your rate X amount of dollars, not only just no, but hell no, that's what they'll say. And putting arguments in the bond language is not the appropriate place to do it. The best place to do it is through advertising, that's my professional opinion. I, I don't even like what's under now, what, what the amended proposition is.
Okay, anybody else, Judy?
I get, now that I, you know, read the language, I think we're just, we have a better opportunity if we. Do a campaign and we're available. if we do a campaign and we're available to answer questions and we, you know, kinda show and tell. Because we do need it to pass. I think people, if they don't understand it's gonna cost them money, they haven't been watching us lately. I mean, everything, you know, costs them money. And I think if we can explain it to them, if, you know, I don't know.
Yeah.
I think we can certainly do an education campaign. And I think, you know, we have to do due diligence in that respect to put it out there. But I guarantee we're going to hear from people that we didn't, we didn't provide the information, we didn't explain it.
It always happens.
I'm starting to get the hang of this.
Yeah. It hasn't changed in thirty years. All right. Let's call the roll on the motions to rescind and do the new, new one. Call the roll, please.
Your Honor.
Oh, Bob?
So if this is defeated, it defaults back to the original?
Correct. Correct. Call the roll, please.
West?
No.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Zingy?
No.
Okay, that passes five to two. So it brings us down to item seven B one. Change order one, eleventh contract twelve twenty-nine Whitman Lake Hydro Project, General Construction Dawson Construction. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, do you wanna defer this until after the executive session?
Is this the executive session one?
This is one.
Oh, they're both, one and three. All right, let's go to two. Did we do two? No, we canceled it, somebody had a question. So let's move, let's keep one and three for after the executive session. That brings us down to seven B two, Professional Service Agreement for Phase Two four G LTE project and construction management services Alpine Tower and Technology. Do we have a motion? Your Honor? Go ahead.
Pursuant to section three twelve oh five one B two of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, I move the City Council to approve a professional services agreement with Alpine Tower and Technology at a cost not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars for Phase Two project and construction management services for the built-out of the LG, of the four G LTE mobile project. Authorize funding from the Telecommunication Division's four G LTE mobile project capital account and direct the city manager to execute the contract documents on behalf of the City Council.
Move it in second. Did somebody have a question on this?
Yeah.
Oh, Dick?
Uh, I, I guess I'm down to the scope of work again on page, on the I bet two sixty-one. And there's just a, I don't know, there's an awful lot of stuff in there and I'm gonna call it stuff. And then the other thing that bothers me about this whole project, and somewhere up in here in the front of it, it says that we've been provided an update and it was back in May. I don't think anybody understands where this project is, the five million dollars, where it's gone and what's been spent, what's the balance sheet or anything again. So some point in time, somebody needs to start talking a little bit more about this project. It's a five million dollar project, we don't get any updates hardly. It's like we do on other contracts. And it's not a straight contract, there's a whole bunch of little bitty ones. So I, I guess I'm still concerned about this, where this is all going. So if you look at that page there and try to understand what scope is, why, I guess we've hired an employee. I'll leave it at that.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven, nothing. Brings us down to item four, Resolution fourteen twenty-five sixty-two, Providing for Submission of Qualified Voters of the City in Municipal Elections to be Held on October seventh. Division Regarding Issuance of Municipal Utility Revenue Not to Exceed Five Million for Water Main Replacement Projects, Shonbar Road, Chatham Front Mill and Stedman Street. All right, do we have a motion to do the same thing?
Hey, Your Honor?
Go ahead, Dick.
I move the City Council to rescind Resolution number fourteen two twenty-five fifty-six and approve Resolution number fourteen twenty-five sixty-two, Providing for Submission of the Qualified Voters. The City at the Municipal Elections to be Held in the City on October seventh, two thousand and fourteen, of a proposition as to whether the City should issue Municipal Utility Revenue Bonds in a principal amount of not to exceed five million dollars to provide funds for water main replacement projects in the Shonbar, Chatham, Shonbar Road, Chatham Avenue, Front Mill and Stedman Streets and Establishment Effective Date.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you. Move a second. Do we want to debate it again or just vote?
Your Honor?
Yes, Bob?
By voting yes on this, we're adding the language to the ballot.
Correct.
And we did that with the wastewater-
Correct.
Okay, I, I just, I'm gonna vote no on this, then I'm gonna ask for reconsideration of this one.
Oh, okay.
Because I, I think that the idea of doing a campaign rather than adding it to the ballot makes sense.
Okay. So we'll reconsider at the next meeting, I don't think?
We could do it right away.
Or can we do it right away?
But we need to dispel, dispense of this motion.
All right. All right. Anybody else? Call the roll.
Zingy?
No.
Kuz?
Yes.
West?
No.
Harris?
Aye.
Seivertson?
No.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
No.
Okay, so that one fails. Now we have a-
Your Honor asks reconsideration.
Okay, of item- Okay, we have one. Amo, is, do we need a motion, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we need a motion to reconsider.
Eleven, seven, eight.
Can you designate or specify which you're reconsidering?
We're reconsidering, um-
Resolution fourteen twenty-five sixty-three.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear for the record. Yeah.
All right. Do we have a motion to reconsider?
I do.
Dick, do we have a second?
Second.
Wait a second. So all we're doing now is voting to reconsider or not. If you vote yes, that means it's back on the table. If we voted down, it's the way it is and we move on. Call the roll.
Sir, which, which resolution are we reconsidering?
The wastewater. Seven A eleven.
Your Honor, if I may. Matt, what I'm asking for reconsideration is, is I don't think that the rate increase language should be incorporated in the actual ballot measure. I think that we should do a campaign prior to, to completely explain that there will be a-
I got it now.
Okay. All right. So let's do it, and before we do anything else, let's vote to see if we're reconsidering. Call the roll, please.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yep.
West?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six to one. All right, what's on the table, Madam Clerk?
The motion that was read relative to, to Resolution number fourteen twenty-five sixty-three, which is the motion that adds the additional language.
Okay, that's on the table. So now we're gonna vote that up or down? Does everybody understand what we're voting on?
Say it again.
We're voting on the one that we approved just a few minutes ago. It's back on the table to be voted up or down again.
Your Honor?
Yes.
What we're voting on is really whether to include the language-
Correct.
-on the rates within the ballot major itself.
Correct. If you vote yes, you're voting for it. If you vote no, you're voting against it.
Yeah. And, and in consideration of that, I wanna make it very clear that I would like to have some kind of a process budget or whatever to do a campaign to talk about the fact that we're talking about bonds that the state's gonna pay seventy percent of. And that the reality of it is we continue to move forward without that type of bonding and if we have to bear the brunt of that cost, it's gonna be more expensive.
Mr. Mayor, we'll bring something back at the next meeting-
Thank you.
-related to a ballot proposition campaign.
What do you think on these projects, Carl? Where are we talking away in state contribution, do you think? If they're paying seventy percent of them? Have any ideas?
What the number is, the seventy percent?
Fifteen million? You got ten million in bonds and you, that's thirty percent.
If the full, if the project is currently scoped, move forward, you're looking at five point two million in bonds and twelve million one hundred and fifty thousand in grants in the state. Seventy percent.
Per, per five million.
All right.
And then I think that it's also important for people to understand that if the state doesn't come through with money, we're not spending enough on it anyway.
And we don't, they might not even spend all this money, it's just what we can contribute.
That's correct.
Yes, I understand.
So would you explain it again, Mr. Mayor? We vote no, it's-
If you vote yes, we keep it in. If we vote no, we're taking it out. The language on how, the rates.
On the rate.
On the rate.
Gotcha.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Seivertson?
No.
West?
No.
Harris?
No.
Carlson?
No.
Olson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
No.
All right, that passes five to two. So we have changed that, it's, I mean, it's defeating that motion five to two. So we're back to the regular, original motion guys took, voted for last time. So that brings us down to the last item on regular business, which is item B six, Whitman True-Up Agreement between KPU and SEPA regarding true-up process for certain displaced sales. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, we're to lay on the table on this for this evening. The agreement has to be approved by ordinance.
Okay, so we'll have to do it twice? Your Honor? Go ahead.
I move the City Council to approve first reading, ordered it number fourteen dash one seven six two, approving Whitman's true-up agreement between the City, Ketchikan, DVA Public, Ketchikan Public Utilities and Southeast Alaska Power, writing for, following a referendum petition and Establishment Effective Date.
Second.
Move it in second. Bob, do you wanna add anything?
No, I was just, a lot of hard work on both parties and I'm glad to see that we are, we have an agreement in place prior to running this through.
You have a question?
You bet.
So if I understand this correctly, if Swan Lake has to spill reservoir water because they don't have a draw for it or need for it, that loses revenue to SEPA that's displaced by our use of Whitman. So we're using Whitman or hoping to use Whitman as an alternative source to help balance out our power needs and hopefully keep costs down. But then if we do use them and we don't use Swan Lake, then we have to pay them for the use that we didn't use. Am I, okay. But it's always just seems weird, like, are we saving? Are we really saving money because we're gonna pay them if we don't use them now?
We're gonna sell it at nine and a half, we'll pay them at six and a half, six point eight.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that because I was-
If I may?
You know, hey, Bob.
The original intent on Whitman, when it was decided upon, was for diesel avoidance. In other words, we were gonna run Whitman instead of running a diesel generator when there was no power. But since this has come about, there is a benefit to Whitman. And due to the power sales agreement with SEPA, there has to reach an agreement according to our bond covenant because it states that SEPA power will become before any of these new projects. And this is a, a means where hopefully we can fully utilize or to the best of the community needs. And so there had to be a true-up agreement someplace. And then I think the, the discussion was, well, how do you measure spill and avoid costs and all this kind of stuff? So they've sat down and again, this is more of a electrical ability to understand how that's all worked out. But they have worked it out and I'm glad to see that we're there.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Lou?
You bet, Matt.
Yeah, I had, I had some, some questions, especially pertaining to the fact that, it's my understanding that as we, once we open it online, we're gonna have a continual feed of electricity coming from Whitman Lake. Is that correct?
One moment.
Andy, do you wanna come on? Councilmember Olson, this is gonna be a learning process as we go forward. There's going to have to be a protocol worked for the dispatching of the Whitman Lake project. And there's gonna have to be discussion between SEPA and KPU as to how to best fit available generation so we can maximize Whitman when we need it and minimize true-ups when SEPA has power to supply us. Long term, it's obviously in the best interest for the community to have that additional generation source available. In the short term, there're gonna be some bumps in the road as we integrate the project into the SEPA KPU grid. Is that fair, Andy?
Sure. Andy Donato, Electric Division Manager. To answer Councilmember Olson's question, there are two units at, at Whitman, a large one and a small one. The small one was designed to run twenty-four seven, to answer your question. And in its running, then, the output water fills a head tank that delivers the appropriate volume of water to the hatchery. So it is conceivable, we can run it twenty-four seven. Its output feeds the hatchery. And of course, we know all the great benefit that the hatchery has to the community and the commerce here. When it's not running, there's a automatic bypass valve that routes the lake water to the head tank to also deliver the water needs to the hatchery. But the intent is to run it twenty-four seven, the little unit. Now, the little unit doesn't produce much power. So that's a whole nother discussion. That's the way it's designed. So Councilmember Olson, did I answer your question?
Well, you did. And I guess my concern here is that I, I was anticipating this true-up agreement to account for that little unit so that we didn't, we could just run that little unit all the time since the water's already moving. And that we wouldn't have that, there would be some sort of negotiation there where that wouldn't cost us anything. I'm a little, I guess I'm a little disappointed that that's not included in this.
Councilmember-
And I think that's an, I think that's an oversight.
Man, keep going.
Councilmember Olson, those discussions were had with SEPA. We tried to incorporate those provisions within the agreement, but SEPA's counsel was very clear that the bond indenture that SEPA has will not allow for that forgiveness. That if we use that generation and it displaces SEPA generation, then it has to be trued up. And that there is no opportunity to incorporate the accommodation that you're looking for into the agreement.
Well, it seems, it seems to me that especially if, if we're not, if, if we're in our current state now, that if we're, I mean, essentially to me, that's Whitman Lake spilling power. It's spilling power all the time. And if we're in that capacity, and I, I don't know how much it would cost SEPA to allow us to generate that continually. My assumption is it wouldn't cost too much. But that could be, I am in vacation mode still. But, but it seems to me that at, at this point in time, especially now with the, with the status of Swan and the status of Tahiti, that we could definitely utilize that extra little bit of generation on our part to help build up Swan and Tahiti. And then I think, I, I think that should be something that should be incorporated in this. I, I understand the counsel, I understand SEPA's position on it, but I, I'm, I'm not gonna vote for this unless that thing is approved in there.
Andy, did you wanna add something?
I, I would. So I believe what you are trying to address is actually incorporated in this true-up agreement. in this true-up agreement. So I'd like to further the discussion just a bit. So there are some seasonal complexities. And so the little unit, let's say it runs twenty-four seven throughout the whole year. But there are times when it won't be, it won't have to be trued up. So if the other two bodies of water, Taiyi and Swan, are not spilling, there's no true-up and we'll utilize that energy. There's also times in the year, typically late winter, early spring, when there's insufficient water. And we'll certainly welcome the power produced by Whitman, and there's no true-up. So, so I, so I believe that, that what you said, I think that's in there in this particular body of work.
Okay, I, I guess, yeah, I just, I just wish it had been addressed explicitly in there regarding that little unit. And, and to further this whole discussion, I, I don't remember. I mean, I wasn't, I did not pay attention to this whole process as we made the agreements at the formation of Sipa, for all the bond packages and whether it probably even goes back to the Fordham pool time. But at some point, I would think that Sipa's probably making more than enough, especially if we're getting refunds, that they could probably account for us to have that in there, and it wouldn't hurt their bond tax or bond capabilities at all.
Thanks, Matt.
Yeah.
All right, call the roll, please.
Kuss?
I'm really happy we got this done, Carl, thank you.
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Carlson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
All right.
West?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Yeah, that was good work to get that done. That brings us down to vouchers. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move for approval of vouchers to the Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of two thousand sixty-four dollars seventy-seven cents and Southeast Alaska Professional Services LLC in the amount of one hundred and thirty dollars.
Call the roll, please.
Should that be SEAK?
Do we have a second?
SEAK, SEAK, okay.
Harris? Zingy?
Epstein.
Severson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yeah.
Kuss?
Yes.
Carl, do you have anything to add to the manager's report?
Just to Mr. Mayor, I included in the packet the letter that we sent to Mr. Liebrandt on the Hamilton subdivision. And just so the council know, we've had no response from Mr. Liebrandt or the Hamiltons. The other is later this month, we have meetings scheduled with ADEC relative to the power form issue and the raw water supply and what will probably be expanded to a discussion of haliosatic acids, dry halomethanes, and two-point chlorination. Councilmembers had indicated interest in participating. If you could let me know who wants to be in on those meetings, I can get you scheduled on the calendar and let you know what we're doing.
I'd like to attend, Carl.
I'd like to participate.
Dick?
Yeah, Carl, whereabouts is the letter George had in this packet?
It was under FYI.
FYI, number nine.
FYI, nine.
Mm-hmm, FYI, A nine. I think it's five forty-five.
Okay, I'll look for it. I just not seeing it.
I think it's page, page five forty-eight, if you do that.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Marty.
Nancy McNulty mentioned a problem with the sign at Birth Four and said that was in violation of an agreement we had before.
Councilmember West, I had an opportunity to review the non-exclusive pedestrian easement earlier this week related to another matter. I'm not an attorney. In my opinion, the sign that was erected is not a violation of that non-exclusive pedestrian easement, because we are not physically interfering with people going within her establishment. That sign is an informational signage, sign, no different than the wayfinding signs. Subjectively, I understand what she's saying. But from a legal perspective, I'd have to defer to the city attorney. But it's not my belief that the erection of that sign is a violation of the non-exclusive pedestrian easement.
It wouldn't cause me any heartburn if we took the sign down. I don't know what everybody else thinks, but if, I mean, if it creates a problem for her and isn't essential for...
We put the sign up at council direction if the council wants us to do.
I just don't, I'm sorry, I didn't remember that.
Something else, we certainly can do something else.
One thing, you guys got both arrows to those. I thought I mentioned we should do an arrow to the west end. And if we're going to direct people downtown, shouldn't we have an arrow directing them to the other side of town?
Mr. Mayor won't be more than happy to do what the council directs.
KJ?
My understanding on that, that wayfaring sign, whatever you wanna call it, is a couple of times I've visited on Birth Four, by the way, they don't have a Birth Four sign down there. We need a sign that says Birth Four. But when, when the passengers come up off the ramp, they spend a good first five minutes accosting everybody that lives here on where you go for the free shuttle. This sign tells them where the free shuttle is.
I think Dick was the one that brought this to our attention.
I brought it up. It's been going on for several years. And it's a benefit to the, to the passengers coming off that ship, and it's also a benefit to the people that work there. In my personal opinion, it does not affect that store at all. If they want, they can see it. It's a big thing sitting there. If they want to go buy something, go buy something. People working there, if they ask a question, they drive them to the store. It's not a big deal, really.
I had, I have had several people ask me what they're doing at Birth Four. I've told them that that's not our city property, but that I would ask if anybody has an answer to what, what's going on down there.
That is stevedoring, is building their offices, two-story building. And they'll have some other room for possible retail. And I imagine, I hear they're negotiating with people to see if they want to go into it. But on the top floor will be Southeast Alaska Cruise Agencies. Yeah. Offices. So that's why I went down and talked to them, because I was, everybody was asking what was going on, too.
Okay, and I had one, one other thing. I had mentioned a while ago, or the last meeting, I think it was in University of Alaska, Fairbanks was doing some look, looking at the southeast watersheds. And I was just wondering if there was any possibility that anything they were doing might reflect on what the problem is or potential problems are with our source water, and if anything ever came of that.
We reviewed the article, Councilmember West, and I don't think it, it's...
It was not relevant at all.
...relevant to what our issue is. DEC, this came to my attention earlier this week. DEC is undertaking other examinations of water bodies in the Ketchikan area, and they are finding similar results. So we've sent that information to CH two M Hill to see whether that hurts or helps our cause, and I haven't heard back from that yet, so...
Would, would there be a possibility that the report that has been developed that talks about our source water could be sent to those people that are doing the watershed study? Just in case they have any kind of comments that, that it might draw some interest that way, that they might look at in the course of the research, that they might, you know, check that out?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else on the manager's report? See, and, yeah.
I had brought up the question about potential for any consolidation of services between the fire departments in light of Chief Share's pending retirement. And the discussion we had was that Manager Amalon had given Chief Share direction to discuss the situation with the other two departments. And I was told recently that there hasn't been any outreach by Chief Share in that regard. And I'm just wondering if there is a plan or...
Councilmember Zingy, I don't know who you've been talking to.
I'm Carlson.
Councilmember Carlson, I don't know who you've been talking to.
The chief of the South Tongus Fire Department.
Well, the chief is not in the loop. There has been extensive discussion.
Well, I thought the point was to talk to the chiefs, you know, Chief Share talked to the other chiefs.
Right, right now, we've been asked to talk to the borough. We have to defer to the borough manager, okay? We're, we have talked to him, we've developed some information for them. The direct, the direction that this seems to be heading, and we've made no commitment, is essentially that we've been asked to consider whether the city wants to provide fire and EMS for South Tongus and potentially the airport.
Kind of consolidated, like, places?
The proposal that we've been asked to develop information is for the city to provide those services to South Tongus and the airport.
So, our department would do that and not incorporate what's out there now?
Details haven't been fully vetted yet, and, and we've made no commitments. But that's what we were asked to look at. And we've developed some potential numbers that have been transmitted to the borough manager, and we're waiting to hear back from the borough manager. Whether they're gonna find the numbers that we put together or attractive enough for them to move forward, I don't know.
Thank you. I appreciate the update. So maybe hypothetically, we do that and I'll take the library?
I have a question.
Yes.
If, if I could maybe ask Mr. Newell, and you don't have to move, I have a question. Is there any way to get a piece of paper somewhere that tells us how far, how much we're in debt in bonds for our city, for who we owe how much, and that would be cool. Thank you. I want to ask that in case other council will interest you.
Okay. All right, that brings us down to city clerk's file.
Nothing, Your Honor.
City attorney's file.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you for the report. Future agenda items? All right, brings us down to mayor and council comments. Dick?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Judy?
I've had, I had an opportunity last week to, I've been reviewing the library calendars just to see what's available. And one of the things that struck me, just because people have spoken to me about it, is that the library's closed on Sunday and that that is a day when many families would be able to access it. I should say I was really impressed with what the library provides and disappointed that we, you know, build a fourteen million dollar building and we can't keep it open seven days a week. I mean, that's... And then about the Performing Arts Center, as I read Mr. Zastro's letter, I guess for me, the Performing Arts Center, I see this as some sort of a design flaw. I mean, we would basically be taking away parking from seniors and giving it to other seniors. So I just wanted to clear that. That's pretty, oh. And our community lost a lady last, a couple of days ago, actually, Ms. Lillian Dudley.
Oh, did she really? Wow.
And, you know, she moved here in nineteen fifty, worked with the ferry system. And Dudley Field is, I believe that they...
That's, yeah, they donated the land.
They donated that land. So I'm sort of on a crusade to get the state to pay attention to our needs here in terms of assisted living. We have eleven beds at the manor, that ain't gonna cut it. And that's pretty much all we have. And we really need to stop and think of the neighboring communities around here, because they come here. And we really have nothing available. So I'll probably be inviting some of you to participate with me as I go forward.
Up to, the end?
Well, considering I'm getting older, I would volunteer to help with that.
Thank you.
Getting on the list when it's being made. Nothing else?
All right.
Probably today.
I agree with Judy, but the hospital does have a transitional care unit. It's a twenty-nine-bed unit that is, quite a few of those people are, it's a nursing home. So there are some assisted living.
In long-term care.
In long-term care.
Well, I'm, I know about that, but it's just sometimes we put them there because we don't have another place to put them, and long-term care could be used for long-term care.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that there's not any, I'm just saying, just pointing out that there's some other... That's all for me.
Bob?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about seniors issues. Home and community-based services are definitely needed in the state of Alaska. Ketchikan is probably a little better off in some of the communities. I don't think there's anything in Juneau for assisted living other than the Pioneer Home that exists there. And the Pioneer Homes have been struggling with what they're gonna do with the growing population of seniors that are gonna come about. We have the fastest-growing senior population in the United States. And Health and Social Services has been struggling with that right along. And I think they're continuing to try to figure out where those corrective measures are gonna come from as far as care. I'll keep you updated.
Thank you. KJ?
Yes, sir.
Dick, you have something?
Yeah, a question for Carl. I've noticed that the visitor center over here is closed one to two hours before the last ship leaves. So there's no facilities available to the passengers that are wandering by. Maybe we can figure out why they're closing, like I say, one to two hours early or before the ship leaves. I really don't want to give me more money to run it, but I think it should be open under contract.
Hey, Matt? Do you have anything to say? Hello, Matt? Matt, it's gone.
I'm here.
Oh, okay. Do you have any comments?
I, I've enjoyed my vacation and I look forward to getting back when I can hear a whole, complete sentence all again.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Have a good, have a good one. Only comments I have, I'm sorry to hear about Lillian. I saw Mrs. Freeman pass, too. She was made it to ninety-seven with Chuck. Oh, it was Freeman, what do you need? I'm sorry to hear. Those are two people that spent a lot of time here in Ketchikan. Sorry to hear. The only thing, we have signups for council positions. You can get your stuff from the city clerk and get signed up. A couple have already signed up. KJ, I noticed you have, so. Encourage people that are interested to sign, get their petition. And we have executive session. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the city council to declare that it's in the best interest of the city to go into executive session in accordance with KMC two oh four oh two five A one and AS forty-four sixty-two three ten C one and three to discuss potential litigation strategies associated with the design and construction contracts pertaining to the Whitman Lake hydroelectric project, which includes the need to discuss subjects, the knowledge of which could have an adverse impact upon the finances of the city, and to discuss potential litigation strategies with legal counsel within the attorney-client privilege.
Do you have a second?
Beggar.
Move in second. Call the roll, please.
West?
Yes.
Olson?
Yeah.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yep.
Harris?
No.
Severson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
All right, that's approved. We're going to executive session. Matt, are you gonna stick around to vote on these, or are you gonna go? Hello?
I'm here, I'm here. Sorry, I had you on. How long, how long do we anticipate the executive session to be?
I don't know.
I would hope it would be no more than ten minutes.
Ten minutes. If you're here, we'll keep, we'll wake you up.
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you. Okay, let's adjourn into executive session, please. Well, I thank you very much.
I don't have much of a life.
I don't have a delay.